Yes, I appreciate you.
All right, first on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I don't have a motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, June the 3rd, 2024?
I'm gonna make my move.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Public hea- approval of the minutes for the public hearing, June 24th, 2024? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right, let's get straight into it. I want to welcome everybody tonight. I hope everyone had a good 4th of July. Two hundred and forty-eight years old, America. There's been a lot going on in the city of Dillon in June. I'd like to thank our county economic director for putting on a series of ambassador programs. We held all of those or they held all of those out at the City Wellness Center. These programs are a good way to attract new industry, very informative, attract new citizens, and it's a good way to bring the community together and to explain what's happening and help everybody better understand economic development for our county. We also met here in the city with a consultant, Rose and Associates, and this was the one that we did with the hedge grant. And we had a steering committee. We met there at the visitor center and we discussed ways to develop Radford Boulevard and ways to develop downtown specifically with hotels and restaurants. So this was the first meeting and I actually took her around, Bert and I took her around and we looked at a lot of different places and, you know, I'm very interested to see what they come back with to bring us. Also, we had a visit from a builder here in South, located here in South Carolina. They actually flew down to Dillon and their plane landed out here at the airport and we met with them at the visitor center. And we had kind of reached out to them a little bit and after we reached out, they were actually a little bit interested. We sent them a little bit of information last week. We're waiting for them to send us a little information back. Hopefully in the future, we might could get some sort of housing going on and this would be, you know, houses with yards and maybe some neighborhoods somewhere. So anyway, it's a start, so it is hopeful. Also this month, we had a pet giveaway that was sponsored by the Dillon Humane Society and it was held in the parking lot out at the city fields. Really appreciate everything that Humane Society is doing. You know, I think that the food they got, they actually petitioned Chewy and all their excess or damaged bags, they loaded up on a trailer and this was the second one that they had. So really appreciate everything that they're doing for the community. Also, last month, we had a really good community event. DCA sponsored a litter pickup and it was a Palmetto Pride pickup. So Palmetto Pride would be the organization that delivered some grant money and some supplies to help get this going on. But DCA helped out with this and helped organize this event. Also, Harbor Frey was really, really generous. They supplied, David, I guess it must have been seventy-five buckets or fifty or seventy-five buckets, pairs of gloves, vests, picker rappers, lots of trash bags. It was a lot of stuff that they supplied. The Methodist Men, they came out and cooked lunch, hot dogs and hamburgers. We had about thirty-five to forty people out there. A couple of the groups got started really early and I'm not sure how many they had in their group, they wanted to beat the heat, but they started really early. Anyway, at the end of the day, at eleven o'clock, when everyone came in from lunch, we had picked up seven hundred and eighty pounds of trash. That was eighty trash bags. And of course, I really appreciate everyone that helped. There were a lot of local churches that got involved over in that area. It was around the East Dillon Baptist Church from Mars Hill, Bethel over that way, back over towards Jabber Hills Church on Calhoun. It was a really good community building event. We had some of the police officers came by, chatted with the people out there, passed out some waters. We had a couple of city employees out there that were helping pick up the bags. It was a great community building event and we got seven hundred and eighty pounds of litter off of our streets. And I hope DCA will be playing another one here in the future. With all these events, there's always a lot of public involvement and interaction and a lot of that interaction, Glenn, is with the city employees. And three times this month, people have commented to me, and these were citizens, and they said, where do you find these, where do y'all find these employees for the citizens, for the city of Dillon? And they always ask, they're such good people, they're so nice, they're so friendly and they're always out here helping. And I don't think we say it enough, but I do want to thank Bert, your crew, David, your crew was out there. I want to thank them for everything that they do. And people do notice the pride that those guys have in their community and they really appreciate it because it is contagious. It is contagious. Also, Councilman Eller, I reached out to DCA for an update on the Paul Braun Grant and they said, you know, whenever they have something to report, they will. They said they're just at the beginning stages. No money has changed hands. They've not been seen any. Until the grant administrators give them further instructions on the rules and regulations, there really isn't a whole lot to report right now. They've got some ideas or some stuff that they would like to do and they said when they get things kind of firmed up, they'll get with the city manager and council and kind of tell us what their plan is and see if there's something that we all can move forward with together.
Or is Craig Murrow's team look pretty?
They do look pretty. They do look pretty, but everybody's ready to move on with the Paul Braun Grant. Lastly, I want to congratulate Councilman Washington for his win for the county council District One primary. So I guess you'll head on into November with no opposition. But I would have you for another five or six months, right? All right, thank you. And that's all I have. All right, now, we'll move on to the audit report. Smith Brooks is here. Ms. Brooks?
I'm gonna get it right to my good side. We got several of them.
Which ones are they?
I'm not gonna touch them. Y'all should have gotten a booklet in your package this month. This is June 30th, 2023. We're a little behind. It's a little late getting started. Fact is, we got the bill, kind of caught in the middle of it and just now, recently, in the last month or so, gotten wrapped up. Again, it promises me we won't be this late next year. I hope not. The goal is, of course, to be finished late December, present January timeframe. That keeps it out of my backside. Jumping into some numbers. This was a single audit here. What that means is if the city receives greater than $750,000, there's additional work that has to be done for the figures. You had all that ARP money is, property money is federal fed funds, so that goes into the equation. One of your loans for water and sewer, apart from the hillside drive loan, odd as it sounds, that's considered grant monies. It's included in the calculations. You had over 2.8 billion dollars in grant monies or fed fund monies during this particular audit period. So that did cause a single audit that actually performed, which is additional work. No finding, no exceptions, clean opinion on everything from all aspects there. There are three significant efficiencies listed, two of them repeats. One of them, my own business, it's a one-time deal. There were some grant monies that didn't get booked last year, that should have. What that caused was it dealt with federal money too. That would have caused a single audit for FY '22 because of the dollar amount. You were close, you were $710,000, add another sixty to it, you're over $750,000. So we're gonna have to go back and amend your '22 audit to incorporate that single audit work that's gonna have to be done hopefully here in the next sixty days or so, if Janet and I can catch our breath to get it done. I'm gonna hit a few highlights, balance sheet on page seventeen.
Over the two that were returned. You said we had two deficits that were returned, what was that?
The efficiencies, the segregation duties, the preparation for the annual survey. The same comments, you've had those for every year.
What was the one?
It was the single audit that didn't get done.
It was USDA grant that we got in water and sewer for excavator, an immediate excavator and a truck. And by the time the money came in, it was in the next year. So it wasn't posted in the prior year.
The expense was in the prior year, but the revenues were not booked by the immediate.
How much is it ahead? Can you go back? Is it?
It is. Because you got, there's the checklist and stuff.
Got to redo all the numbers.
Well, it's really just the one number, I mean, for the receiving. But I got to do all the compliance side of it and, you know, determining what's a, not so much major program, but which major program that will have to have additional testing done because of now you did qualify. I wish it was as easy as pushing buttons.
Is that additional cost to the city for having to go back?
Yeah, that's what we got to do. It's a lot easier to do while you're doing it. Balance sheet on page seventeen. This is general fund, I'm talking general fund only. There's multiple columns there. Cash investments increased by about $459,000. Total assets up over half a million. Your one assigned fund balance was almost 3.9 million, which approximates about 223 days of your budget, which was up from the prior year by about 202. From an income statement perspective, page nineteen and twenty, your overall excess is $220,000 for this particular year. The budget actually is always useful information, which is on page fifty-three for just the general fund. Your revenues were over budget, make sure y'all hear this right. Revenues were over budget by a million and eighty-seven thousand dollars. So every line item was over budget except police fines. I mean, across the board. So that's a good thing, but your expenses were also over budget by about $995,000. So good and bad. A lot of that's grant money, so grant money didn't get much to expense to be budgeted. So a lot of that's just capital loss. It wasn't all of that, but that was probably half of it roughly for this particular year. American Rescue, I call them ARPA money. You got the second tranche, I think they called it a million five. You spent $672,000 during this year, this fiscal year. Let you defer revenue of 2.1 million dollars at June 30th, '23. I think Janet and I just discussed this, you still got over a million dollars deferred, which means you haven't speedaged it yet. Well, 12/31/24, it needs to be their word is obligated. And that doesn't mean we're gonna spend it on this. It means you need to have a contractor or something firm in place to get it. That's why your inflation is so high. They're pushing this money out and they're requiring you to spend it that quick. It's hard to do. It really is dilutive. It's not easy to just to spend it wisely especially. I mean, you could go out there and waste it, but.
We're fortunate, we have a couple of projects that we're ready to do, you know, like the blue spot.
Right, but you've also got some that are pulling teeth to try to get ready. Just something to keep in mind as you move forward, because, I mean, we're six months left.
We're gonna lose it if we don't do it.
Water and Sewer, cash investments increased about almost six hundred. Twenty-two. Cash investments increased to almost $600,000. Total assets increased almost around 1.9, almost $2 million. Liabilities were also up 1.7. Most of the total assets and total liabilities decrease was related to that hillside drive project which completed during FY '23.
When you figure out liability, that includes depreciation.
Liability?
Expenses.
Yes. So page twenty-three is the revenue, income statement revenues increased from the prior year of about $400,000. Operating expenses increased about $650,000. But you have to, it's not a problem, but you got over $900,000 in grant monies. So grant money comes in, the expenses is that depreciation number you're talking about over ten to fifty years, you know, whatever the life of that infrastructure or piece of equipment is. So I always back it number out, the grant, the grant revenues. Bottom line shows you had a profit of around numbers $400,000. But if you take the $900,000 out, you lost the half a million dollars. So it's good and bad. Good, you got the grant monies, but at the same time, you got to keep that in mind issue.
That was in water and sewer. We lost.
Well.
Without that grant money, we lost $500,000. I thought we had service.
You did with the grant money.
I would have thought about without the grant money.
But you got a million, well over a million dollars in depreciation fees. Not cash. That's where your cash is continuing to rise because you, you know, the grant's paid for. Now you're just gonna appreciate it over the next ten to fifty years and take the expense for it, but the revenues hit at one time. It's just the accounting of the situation.
But to clarify, if you took depreciation out, we were in good form.
Right, correct. I don't want to give all the information, I just, I give a part of it.
You have his attention. We lost money?
And, you know, the good thing about what we're trying to do is we're not only trying to accumulate money in the depreciation fund, you know, but we're also taking depreciation on paper.
Right.
So, you know, hopefully we accumulate match money as we'll need it in the next ten, fifteen years to.
Well, you got to because the match monies have, to me, ballooned to a point of, or you got to give part of the money to do a match. So you can get paid.
Ten, twenty million dollars to match what we need to get to the big deal.
Right. Your general long-term debt, which is your governmental side of your debt service, it decreased by $258,000. That's on page forty. And page forty-one is your water and sewer bonds, which increased by a million three. The hillside drive is what should be able to push that number up. And that's a very, very great overview. Glad to take your question.
Yeah, Smith, you normally open up, you tell us if we have a catastrophic event, the city will be in good standing for so many, many days.
That's the, that's the.
Two hundred and twenty-three.
Two hundred and twenty days.
I missed that.
We were up to twenty days or.
Right. It went two oh two.
Okay, I missed that.
That's from a general fund standpoint. Water and Sewer should, I mean, you're constantly generating revenues at Water and Sewer. I mean, every month, they're coming in. But the general fund is like a roller coaster. You get revenues, property taxes at a certain time of the year, business licenses at other times. They're not as consistent and you got to have that cushion to get you through this lean time. On page fifty-one, you got forty-four percent Purdue is always water. I was, uh, Sewer.
Water and Sewer.
Purdue accounts for forty-four percent of your water and sewer sales.
Okay. That's forty-four percent of what they give us. I'm just using our round number.
I take, I take.
If we collect four million dollars.
I take their consumption.
Yeah.
Times their rate and divide that by the total.
Got you.
This would be about fifty-six percent.
So with that being said, with Purdue and the citizens using the water, how much would you say percentage wise that we might max our West Water Creek plan out? I mean, that's what I'm trying to.
You're talking allocation wise, we're maxed. Yeah. And what I mean by allocation, what we promise, new lines that's being built, this is gonna carry X number of gallons, allocations max. What we treat on a daily basis, we're probably in the seventy percent range.
Seventy percent capacity?
Yeah.
You got it planted at eighty and building at ninety, is that right?
Somewhere in that ballpark. That's what we're trying to do with this new plan. But allocation wise, if everybody was giving us what they say they give us and then we got it, we couldn't take it. But as far as treating, like right now, we're good. We get wet, you know, that kind of creates problems. Right now, we're good.
I thought we fixed a lot of our I and I issues.
But you still have some.
Still got plenty.
You still gonna have some, yeah. Anything else that stands out to you? Giving us a thumbs up?
Oh, yes. I don't want to say better than both, somebody, she might read that in the papers. You're better than a lot, I promise you that.
You guys got any more questions? Can't tell you how much we appreciate you and your firm. Thank you. Anybody got any questions?
Call me.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move right into city manager's report. I was just gonna follow up with some information Smith provided us tonight and I went back to look at, and what I'm looking at is your financial report you got at the end of June, which is not actually complete because there's still some outstanding things there. But I compared it to June 30th, '23, which that's what he just reported on. And in general fund, he said we were to the good about $220,000 if I heard you right. Based off of our financial report of last year, we showed $213,000 to the good. So you're pretty close.
You come $7,000 in a six, eight million dollar budget, that's pretty close.
So I went back to 2022 and I think the audit at that time was somewhere around a little over $400,000 in general fund. Well, I reported June 30th, '22 was $400,000. So we're pretty close. So I'm going, okay, this year, the report you got in your hand, right now, as it stands, we're at 166,000 revenue more than expenditure. So I'm assuming once the audit's done, we'll be somewhere in that neighborhood on the water, I mean, on the general fund side. And then I looked at the water and sewer, did the same thing. It's a little different because of depreciation. June 30th, 2024, which is the report you got in hand now, revenue over expenses, and this is not taking depreciation, is 1.4 million. Well, if you take in that depreciation of what was about $900,000, pretty close. June 30th, '23, it was 1.2. I think at the end of the day, we were somewhere around 300, 400,000 again last year. And then in June 30th, 2022, we were 1.3 million revenue over expenses. Took in depreciation out of that, we were somewhere still around 300, 400,000 to the good. So trend is we're pretty close on our reports, especially at the end of the year when she still has some things that's got to be, that have not been collected or paid out as of yet.
That's been with a 10% increase, tax increase.
Oh, yeah.
For the last four or five years.
That is correct.
And I mean, this, I think next year, it's gonna be worse than 10%.
Well, you take, you take, again, in June 30th, 2022, we were to the good $400,000. This year, I'm projecting 165, so, you know, that's $300,000, $250,000. Less. And then the year in between, we were like $200,000 less. So it's gonna get worse before it gets better.
Inflation, municipality's government and medical are getting at least half a year as bad as the private sector. Our inflation is awful, you know, and goods, you know, for our office.
All right, again, we, and I put a note here just to bring that up, just to bring up the storm work project. When it was first done and we got the grant through the state, we got around $4 million based off the preliminary study that was done. Then once the state hired an engineering firm and they started working on the project in the fall of this past year, the engineering firm says, well, what we're looking at now is about $8 million. So we went back to the state and they said, all right, we can give you another $4 million towards this project. Was it last two weeks ago, Bert?
Yes, sir.
Now they're looking 12 to 15 million dollars.
Building that school, you know, there was enough, eight mils enough to build the whole school. Well, time to get it built, you know, you had to lose two, you know.
Well.
Two grades, now you got.
Right now, there's no money left in that pot, so they're scratching their heads trying to figure out what we're gonna be able to do. Because you can't do what was planned based off of the new information. But that's between the state and the engineering firm to figure that out. We're just gonna be a benefit of what happens. But it may not be exactly what we thought was gonna happen, but there already be some things that will happen. We just don't know what's happening.
Well, speaking of, I wanted to ask you since we're talking about this money situation with the ARP money, I know there's different line items that we haven't used before. Can we get ahead of the ballgame and start getting some contracts like the meters?
Well, we're working on that. That should be bended out here in the next month.
So we don't lose the money?
Yeah, and, you know, we can come back probably September and if I feel like that there's gonna be some issues with some things, we can do something better, if that makes sense. That's all I have at this time, Mayor. All right, Mr. Plack.
Glenn's pretty much updated your own stuff and while I'm still getting money in, we still have money in the bank. We got depreciation money sitting over there, CDs. I did let Glenn know today, I took $500,000 out of the unrestricted depreciation account. Moved it into water and sewer, which is water and sewer, to be able to do the EDA money that we spent over close to $700,000 already at the city's money that we got to get back. And it may take three to six months to get that back, but we're working on that.
That highway now. Yeah, that's putting that two sewer lines to the spray field off the bridge. Now the same one.
Under the water.
Yeah, under the water, yeah.
But that's money we'll get back and it'll go back in those funds where I took them from.
How much capital do we have at this moment? We still got a lot of capital, you know, police cars and stuff like that.
Exactly. Moon trills and payphone and stuff. And that's in your, in your audit. I think we've got one or two, can't remember exactly where it was. Somewhere in here, it gives us a breakdown of, is it page forty?
Mm-hmm.
We got one garbage truck that's down. Well, first and foremost, the, the wellness center is the first one listed, it'd be paid off in February twenty-five. And then we've got police vehicles, I don't remember how many that, that was, but that was paid off in May. Sanitation truck, we paid off next month. Then you've got various equipment, which will be in April of twenty-six, another sanitation truck in June of twenty-seven, additional police cars July of twenty-seven, sorry, May.
So with that being said, Glenn, I'm just asking, if you have an additional ARP money, can you pay this stuff off?
Sure you could. If they'll, if, you know, I don't know how they'll do like they did with us with the community center, I mean, wellness center, we asked about one time, they wouldn't let us. But I imagine they, they would let us.
They'd, they'd.
They probably would.
Okay.
Probably would. I wanted to also bring up, in, in the budget we just completed in the general fund last year, we had budgeted three hundred and two thousand dollars in using our reserve fund in the general fund to buy capital stuff, the budget that we're in this year. Well, we collected enough revenue where we didn't have to go into our own money. So, you know, that three hundred thousand, we didn't touch this year.
Jimmy Ford, I just, we need the reserves.
Yeah.
You don't need to budget to build anything.
No, we, we hadn't been budgeting the, the grant money.
No.
We have not been doing that. And if you've got matches in there, that's not in the budget, but that's funds that's gotta come out. That may be something we need to look at.
Well, that's part of what, what the reserves afford them, you know. If I can get eight hundred thousand dollars, now spend two hundred thousand. You don't like it, but you get an eight hundred, you get a million dollar product.
Well, we like those that, if, if they're giving us the eight hundred thousand along the way. This one we're doing right now with the EDA project on sewer line relocation, we've got to spend our money first before they give us their money back to us.
We'd be good to have that money.
It is, but I, you know.
We didn't have it.
Couldn't do it, you're right.
What about the money that we got awarded, the eight million, ten million dollars for the wastewater treatment plant?
That's being, that's part of the water meter project and doing some other things at the wastewater plant.
So we're utilizing, we're moving forward?
They're working on that, yeah. But it's gonna be one of those, it's kind of like ARP money, you have until June of twenty-six to spend that. Ain't gonna hap, it, it, it will not happen, and the state's gonna have to give additional day, time for that. Because it's just.
Can't get engineers.
It is saturated.
Yeah.
Saturated. Because we're not, I mean, there were, I forgot how many entities were at that meeting a year and a half ago, but that, that building, the school, there's no way you're gonna be able to do it.
Anything else with finance? Great. All right, let's move right into citizens' report. I see a few out there tonight. Ladies, y'all have anything?
Uh, yes, I, I, my name is Linda.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, my name is Langley, and I'm concerned about the west side of town off Main Street and Eleventh Avenue. That area has become very, um, garbage looking, if I could say. They're, they're throwing garbage on the streets. I think I've, I've spoken to a few people here about that. So my concern is, what do you do about that when the block is being used as a garbage on both sides? The people are walking up that avenue, throwing garbage on the streets. It's not being contained. It's unsightly, it looks really, really bad. Also, on that side, in that particular Eleventh Avenue, up to Cleveland Street, there are properties where the, it has grown up so much, it looks like a forest. On the left side, have any of you seen that area?
No.
Off Main Street, west side, um, the, the main street here.
Motor car wash.
Motor car wash, make a right on Eleventh Avenue or Ninth Avenue, either one. But Eleventh Avenue in particular, it looks awful. And I don't think, I don't understand why. I just don't understand why it looks that way.
Can we take a look at that?
Yes, sir. We, we sent certified letters to the property owners. And once the letters come back, they have a certain period of time where we can actually cut the lots. And time passed, I, I think, with Miss Langley, because we've been talking back and forth, and this has been something ongoing for years.
Yes.
We would, the city, that is, would cut the lots, mow the lots. Some of these folks that own the properties are not here in Dillon. And we were sending work orders to Bert, Bert sends his crew out there to cut the lot, but it grows up again. It's one of those areas where, as you were saying, folks would ride by, they'll throw garbage trash cans out, trash all over the property. We send certified letters to the property owners again. Property owners have folks to come and pick the trash up. Sometime we get community personnel to actually pick the trash up. They give it probably about two weeks, and it's right back down there, yeah.
But we can't really go on the property unless you do the certified letter, other than we could clean up to the right away. But it's mandated, I mean, it's not something, we could even pass an ordinance to do anything here for this, pretty much state that you have to do the certified letter.
What is that process though? I mean, how many days of certifications, sending out notices before we could actually get on the property, fill the property?
With the trash, I'm thinking it's fifteen days after they sign for the certified letter, we'll send it through the post, post office system. And the post office, sometime it would take them three to four weeks to deliver the certified letter. And then we'll actually get the confirmation back. Immediately, once we get the confirmation back in a green card, this is when we're notified, Bert's department, he will send his crew out there to either cut the grass, things of that nature. The problem is, is that once you alleviate the situation, the grass, mow the lots, about two to three weeks, and that's what Miss Langley and I were talking about on the phone, and I think that's what she's, she's addressing the council there, is that when the lot's mowed, when the trash is removed, two to three weeks, it's right back down there again.
So my question is, I know you threw procedure, I, I've spoken with you several times, I understand that. But beyond that, there's nothing that, you think we just do the procedure over and over? I mean, like, for example, there are, there are some properties there, and I mean, a forest is there. I mean, I understand the right of way, you, you, you go in, you mow that, but no one ever responds and, and you can go and cut further into that property?
So what she's speaking there, there's some trees that's on some of the properties, and, and there's some undergrowth, there's a lot of things that were tear by equipment. And we can only go but so far onto the property. We had had some of our truckers torn, you know, tires and things of that nature.
And we cannot cut their tree.
And the trees maneuvering around the trees is an issue.
Okay, so they can't cut it either, the property owners? They can't cut that?
Yeah.
The property owners, so whatever they want.
But this area, that's speaking of, it's more like a wooded, wooded area. It's not like a, you know, somebody that residents, you've got trees and you've got undergrowth all mixed together in there, yeah. It's pretty much a wooded area.
So what happens to the trash, is what else can we do about that?
The same thing, like, like I said earlier, once the, the trash is removed, and of course, you know that, Glenn and I talked about it, two to three weeks, it's right there again. The only thing we have to do is keep repeating the process.
Do we assess anything to the property owners' taxes when we go on their property? What we?
If we could, if we could, we'd do it.
I might as well just get trash off.
I don't, we don't know. But I don't know if we've ever gone and picked up trash before.
Now, this, this has occurred recently, the trash, last couple of years. We didn't have the trash in that area at first. So I don't understand what's going on and why, I can't, you know, I, I just don't know. I'm asking, I really don't know.
People move from different areas doing different things.
Beg your pardon?
Yeah, people move from different areas doing different things, that's different stuff. You know, some people come from different places, they don't, they don't care what they throw out.
Well, I understand that, but what's we doing? So we just live among it? I'm just trying to understand, is it something we do, I mean, we pay tax?
Well, we have, I got a lot over there, my, my neighborhood, over there on Fourth Avenue, and they're staying, they're like, they're living in, in that lot. And it used to be a house, and we tore the house down, Burt and them, it was, it was beautiful. Now, they're all up under the tree, it looks like a landfill up in there, but you can't go on there and do nothing to it because it's not our lot. So I, I call about that too. So, I mean, and it's right, they're sitting on top of a church.
Could you contact, I mean, could we give her a contact number to the property owners? And maybe some of the neighbors could contact the property owners and try to buy it, or maybe make them feel bad themselves instead of just the city? I don't know.
Well, I hate for us to give out that information, but it's a matter of public record.
Right.
So.
And we don't have access to the telephone numbers, we don't have access to addresses.
And I wouldn't be calling them.
One question I have is, when we go to cut the property, is it, does the fee increase each time, or is it the same thing over and over a year?
Yeah, that's a good point.
So can you increase the, if you go the second time, can it be three hundred dollars?
Sure it can be.
Can you go the third time, be seven hundred dollars?
Yeah.
And then put the.
Yeah, see, I'm asking what else can be done, you're doing this and nothing is happening, so we don't do the same thing over and over.
We have something to look at, Miss Langley.
I understand, I understand your position, but I'm just trying to say, so they can do this, and we can just do a, a letter to them over and over and over again?
Well, I think, and make sure I'm, I'm correct, man, I may be wrong. On, on mowing, once we write the letter the first time, we don't have to write again for that year, does it?
That's right.
Okay. So once we go and write a letter, and say your, your yard is, your, your grass is such and such height that it doesn't need code, you have X number of days to, to rectify it, if not, we will do it. And your charge would be this or that, or whatever the charge may be.
Fee schedule, I think it's a good idea, give them a graduated.
And then if we go and cut it, three weeks later, if we go by and it's up again, we don't have to write them a letter. We can do it again.
But we cannot remove trees.
Could we do the same thing for trash that's not on the right of way, if the trash is in the property?
Well, if someone's living there, which we've had issues before, we've wrote, written a summons, and they either, they either clean it up, or they come to court.
Now, this particular case on the vacant property is different, yeah. There's no house or anything.
While we can't put, while we can't put those signs up like you had over on Hampton Street, when you didn't want somebody to hang on those lots in Hampton Street, you sent them a letter, they were standing up, some people got locked up, standing up.
Right.
That's the same thing.
Right. The property owner has to be in agreement with that. If they don't give us the authority to put under police jurisdiction signs, basically what you're speaking.
We're gonna try send them something.
Now, I, I, I want to, to your point, I was asking, could there be a sign like, no littering or a fine will be done? I know you can't catch everybody, but I mean, just a sign there to just deter. My concern is, why would we have to live among that, have property among, I, I just don't understand that the city could and can't do something else about it. And also.
What would you suggest? I mean, I'm.
I, I thought one time I was speaking to Mr. Genry, I said to him, was there some type of, a sign that you could put up to say, no littering, some type of fine will be done? I mean, you, you can't have a camera and catch them, I understand that, but maybe that would deter them, something other than just letting it.
We, we can do that, but you, you realize.
No.
That, I mean, you realize this is not gonna change.
Yeah, I realize it may not.
But we can do that, but I, I just don't, I mean, again, we've got them in other places that.
Again, I would rather to have something than nothing.
I understand, and that's the reason I asked, what's your suggestion?
We have a problem with vacant lots like she's talking about, and you have areas like this, people actually bring trash and dump.
Dump.
Dump. Dumps, on the side of the road, for us to point out. And this is a problem not only in her neighborhood, but in different neighborhoods also. It's, you know, it's, it's hard to stop.
I think the property owner, if you, if we structure the fee sort of different, and they got to be held accountable, then they come by, they see trash on their property, they're gonna pick it up, they don't wanna pay that five hundred dollars, we got to come back there, buy it and give it.
That's gonna be a requirement, don't leave.
We got to put accountability back on.
A great one percent.
I like that.
Usually fees that are increased over and over helps.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, okay.
Well, they may not be violating it, but it's still their responsibility as property owners to keep their property.
Y'all can figure that out.
You wanna try to work on that sometime?
Yes, sir, I'll get, I'll.
And I have one more other concern there, I've been here several times, not lately, and you may not be happy to see me, but thank you for helping me over the years. But that ditch, Glenn.
You need mosquito bait, you got it?
Yes.
We'll take care of it.
And that has not been done, and that ditch should be cleaned.
Yeah, you on the list to be cut.
And I wanna know, I don't know what you call this, but some company came in and built the apartments, right? You know what I'm talking about, Glenn? And he has this ravine line. Where's, that's supposed to just stay there like that? I thought it was supposed to be a beautiful sight at one point. It's a ravine.
I think it's more like a drainage, like area, you know, where that, attention pond behind the building, yes.
Yeah, on the side or something. Okay, because that is, that is awful. And I was told when I came that it was gonna be a beautiful sight there. That's not beautiful. And I have one other one, now maybe I thought earlier a bit, I'm not sure. But who decides what businesses come into the city? Who makes that decision?
Do their, do their. Property owners, the owners of the businesses?
What are you referring to, Miss Langley?
Like, we're bringing a lot of food places in here. You know, a lot of places to eat, that's nice, but nothing quite nice enough to sit down and eat.
I read, I read somebody's comments the other day on that, and you, you know what they said? That the properties, people wanted too much for their properties.
People wanted too much here?
Mm-hmm. That on the properties here, they wanted too much, and that's the reason, this was their opinion. This was the reason we didn't see that type of growth. You know, that's debated.
In Dillon?
Yes, ma'am. But now, I also say this, and I probably shouldn't, but the older I get, I like to talk more. You can't find people to work, so if you got something, who's gonna work it? I mean, that's what I'm saying, I mean, we don't deal in private stuff, so it would be great if we had restaurants other than what we have, but.
Clothing store?
Clothing store, it'd be great.
Okay, so that's not that procedure, you don't?
I mean, we, we reach out and let people know that, you know, we have availability, you know, land and buildings available. But as far as asking you to go out and knock on people's doors, no, we don't.
No, nothing like that.
Yeah.
But that, that kind of stuff is done here? Yeah.
We're not gonna turn down anybody that wants to come here and try to open up a restaurant or hotel, we're actually looking, because I was, in fact, the grant, what I was talking about earlier, the hedge grant is just for that, so we can get some small business owners that have some numbers to actually present to a lending institution, if they wanted to open a restaurant, and it's not a chain restaurant, they could go and say, the city of Dillon can support this from this city. So we are, we are trying to do some things to solicit.
And what, I'm sorry again, I apologize, I'm not sorry, but the theater, there's no theater here anymore? There will not be one?
They, they, after COVID, they wanted to shut that thing down, they wanted to sell it.
There's no plan to bring one here to Dillon?
Be nice.
There was an offer they couldn't turn down, Miss Langley, that built you a Dollar Channel. I'm being honest with you.
They, they did not consult us, they did not console us when they, when they tore down this old property.
They did not?
Ladies?
Good evening, I am a citizen of the city of Dillon, but I am Joette Dukes. I'm with the PD Regional Council Government, so the new executive director as of January first, and I am making my rounds in the PD, checking on all of our localities, and tonight was my night to be here, and I thank you for letting me sit in and listen, I learned a lot. I'll be back sometime in the future, but we just want to show our support.
Ms. Dukes, I want to say thank you for all your organization does for us, y'all are a big part of the city of Dillon. Y'all are a big part of the city of Dillon, and y'all are a big part of the city of Dillon's success. So thank you for everything that you and your organization do for us.
Thank you.
Yeah, I rely on Lindsay and Kim, we could be.
Yes.
All right, anyone else? All right, there's no more business, let's move straight into the new business. And since Glenn, in his letter, kind of listed out what this new business is, why don't I go through the ordinance, and then we'll talk about it in the discussion after we get a motion and a say, okay? All right, ordinance twenty-four dash twelve. Amend the city of Dillon code of ordinance in order to adopt provisions therein to prohibit parking of dump trucks on premises within residential districts inside the corporate city limits of Dillon, the first reading. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second? All right, discussion. All right, all in favor?
Yeah, I do have one question. Dr. Wallace, you see him out there, you replace the business. Now that we got the first reading, can we reach out and tell them that we getting ready to put an ordinance in place that they can't have the dump trucks in the city limits? I guess what I'm saying, don't come on the back half after we done passed it, and they start asking questions.
And mainly commercial?
I don't know.
Which one? What are you talking about?
The dog right there at the house.
I don't know, that's, I think that may be commercial.
Where, I mean.
Are we gonna allow that to spread out?
Well, I mean, that's, this is only dealing with residential.
The, where, I think that, that same.
Down from your home?
Truck was parked on the plane, and, you know, and it, it was, it was next to a patient of mine, he's ninety-five, ninety-six years old. She's not gonna get out there and tell him that not to run on her yard and all that. But we, we had an ordinance that was pushed through, and I hated it then, twenty-five years ago, maybe. And about parking your, you know, tractor trailer truck in town. And, you know, anyway, that was, that was when you had a meeting before the meeting, and they ran that thing through. And, but there were guidelines, you had to be fifteen feet off of the.
Right of way.
Right of way. You know, but, you know, this, this, and this truck parked right on top of our house. And not right on top of it, you know, ten feet, fifteen feet. Just, if you did that, if you extrapolate that all the way down the road, you know, that's, that's not a pretty sight. That's not what we want to name the road, it's gonna be a problem.
Who owns the property? Is Dr. Blum still owning the property?
I think that's been sold.
So that truck may be shortly reparented.
Ben France, baby.
Baby boy?
Look, I just didn't, I mean, it don't look good for the hospital and the truck sitting out there like that.
Where is it parked?
Two of them are there, don't they?
Two of them, they're on the highway. Get ready to put another one out there, well, hey, we're out there, we don't need somebody. But I mean, it's commercial, and I understand.
Well, if we have to look, make sure, so.
I think it's actually a trucking business.
It's going there?
You know, to turn into my, my parking lot that's right there, you got to go in someone's office.
And that's gonna be turned into a trucking business?
I don't know.
A paving business.
Yeah.
I mean, there you can do that.
Let's talk that something.
We're looking at it.
Because they don't have a none on there, if we're gonna leave somebody, that's more than tough, yeah.
Well, again, if it's commercial, we've got to figure out how we can handle that.
All right, so the one at hand, twenty-four dash twelve, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Ordinance twenty-four dash thirteen, rezone First Baptist Church. The map number oh five nine dash eleven dash zero four dash double oh six from R seven residential district to B two highway commercial district, and to amend the city of Dillon official zoning map, first reading. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
All right, discussion. Glenn, are they just wanting to put a parking lot there?
Benny will have to answer, they're gonna, I think what, you go ahead, you know more about it, I'm sorry.
In essence, what they're gonna do, the team, I think pregnancy team that they have on the other side of the block, they're gonna move that to this new location. The property currently is residential, and I spoke into the pastor, one of the pastors of the church, and he was saying that may, they might just do some teen pregnancy and some other type of counseling, but it all should be church related. And I told him that the law was on residential, if you're doing that with other entities, it has to be commercial. So we, it butts up, continues to be two commercial district.
Any other questions? All in favor? All right, resolution oh eight dash twenty-four, accept request for proposal, RFP master plan for the Wellness Center Center Park. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second? All right, discussion. Glenn, you wanna?
This is just where we're looking to have a master plan done on that forty acres that we purchased a year or so ago, to get a comeback to the council and say, oh, here's what this group will, gives us a vision on, and then we can have some kind of plan in the future, and then determine how you're gonna, how you're gonna go for it.
All right, you're telling me the forty is behind the Wellness Center?
Yeah.
It's a lot of land, we make something really pretty back there. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, resolution oh nine dash twenty-four, resolution to amend the sports complex rental structure. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Any questions? All right, all in favor? All right, all right. Surplus likes and polls?
All right, in your packet, you should see a letter that was written from the head of school at Dillon Christian, Brent Hardy, requesting the city to consider donating what we took down at the park from sports lighting, off the baseball softball fields and the soccer fields to the Christian school, that they may use to light their baseball and softball fields. As I told you in my letter, the poles, the original poles, which were sixteen, I believe, were purchased in nineteen ninety-four, wooden poles. The light fixtures were purchased at that time. They were taken down and out of use with the city, spring of last year. We just redid six more on the soccer football complex, which those poles and lights fixtures were put in in two thousand and one, so they were over twenty years old. We have no use for them, don't know that, that the fixtures themselves will be able to work. That's just something they would have to figure out. But, I told the head to write a letter, and I didn't have the authority to give anything like this away that would be left in y'all's hands.
How many poles are they requesting?
They haven't, they didn't request.
Might as well get all of them.
Well, they got five of them.
Yeah, the poles, you know, the poles themselves, and I, and there's one, two, I think, three different classes of poles, sports lighting poles, some of these are class one, which are, depends on height and width of the poles. Some of ours are class two, some of ours are class three poles. When I went back and looked, when we purchased the original poles in the nineties, we paid like five hundred dollars for a class one pole, four hundred dollars for a class two, and two fifty for class three poles. Yeah, I went and Googled over the weekend, you know, used poles, a brand new pole is about three grand. You know, so, what a twenty-year-old pole costs, I have no clue what the value of it is. But there's more value in the poles than there are in the light fixtures.
How long have they been sitting out there?
Uh, the original ones have been there over a year. And then the last ones came down in April, May.
I mean, on that, on the back part, that, you know, that football field, that? That, you have a plan on doing anything out there?
Wouldn't use those lights, nor those poles, I mean, that, I mean, if we took them down, we took them down for a reason, I mean.
Well, I do know it's gonna be a headache to get them poles from one destination to the other.
Whoever, if they want, they'll give them.
And I'm like this, if they really want, I know they worth a little value, but I'm like you, I mean, that's.
But I would want them to go ahead and get all of it.
I'd take everything.
I mean.
That's what I'm saying.
If we give it to them, they need to take it all, what they don't need, they can.
They can do what they want.
Because all it is is putting snakes and ice, whatever else out there.
Well, I'm saying, I don't know that's not happened. I don't know how much copper is in down to that stuff, you know, wiring. Because there's still wiring that's going up the pole.
Don't put that on, don't put that part off. Give that a check on that, that's already a check.
That stuff would be, they wouldn't use that anyway, but I.
It's not the Cadillac version.
Yeah. All right, I'm shocked if anything is still on.
Do you want to, you want to handle this like a regular ordinance?
Well, it has a resolution, yeah, it's not written, but it's on the agenda. If you want to do anything.
You want us to vote on it?
If that's up to y'all.
Well, one more thing. Oh, can you find out, I mean, they, Glenn, I mean, are they gonna come get it all? Because I'm like, Doug, I'd like to get it out of there.
I, I think what you do is, if you want me to.
Just give it all.
Give it to you. I just tell them, if you want it, you gotta get it all.
You don't need a cherry pick.
Yeah. You need to get it all.
All right, do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
And that motion is?
Yeah, we give them all, the all of them.
Not all or none?
Okay.
Is that, is that what you?
They take it as is.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure what we are doing, because if they don't want to get them all, then we need to get it out of there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so let's.
Well, I'm just saying, do you?
Take it as is, everything we got, as is.
Okay.
But they don't need all of it.
Take good and bad. I think so.
They can stood up and had a fire next year for their homecoming.
All right.
You got a motion in a second?
Got a motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, hold it there if they want. All right, council members report, councilmen, cows, we're gonna start on your members.
Let's start by, what do we have on the JV mark? All right, we're there, we finished that?
Actually, reported in the newspaper there, it's gonna be finished.
December thirty-first?
December thirty-first.
Do we have a crew that goes around, I know we, the lights, the lights are messing up on a lot of the streets. Do we have somebody to go around and just write those?
Police department will do that and turn them into Tina, and then she'll.
They must ain't doing it, because I play. Someone's walking everywhere, so they've been out for a while.
There's a lot of times we'll send Duke Energy that sits there for weeks upon weeks upon weeks.
They can't find the poles.
They've been supposed to. We had one one time before, but Tina couldn't find them, even found it on the map.
They told me when Tom did go tie a ribbon around it, put the crew, and then out we could send it.
And I was saying about the lot on Fourth Avenue, that the light is used to stay in, same, same suggestion that she was talking about with the, they got people, I ain't saying they stay under there, but Burton did a great job tearing the house down, putting the dirt back in there. And now, they're, they're out there just hanging out, doing drugs. They done did two overdoses in that same lot.
Well, when could we reach out to the property owners and ask them, can we put it up under police jurisdiction or something? And, I mean, have we done that, or thought about doing it?
No, sir, that's probably what we did.
I mean.
We'll reach out.
Because I know, I mean, it would be good if they'd let us come in and just cut that, if you cut them trees down, they wouldn't be out there.
Well, if you put that sign up, and, and the police do the job, they hanging there. All it's gonna take, one or two of them get locked up and be around there, and they're not gonna hang there. And then you can probably get something done to the lot, you get that paper picked up and stuff like that. You know, it worked before, why it can't work again?
Take them over there, take them over there.
And they also burned there, we went to fry it, fry it, and then, and also burning there. We went there Friday night and had a fire, Friday nights, like all the more.
Could even say it's becoming a new sun, so.
That's it for you. Councilman Jackson?
Oh, I don't have anything left.
So, Wallace, Councilman L.
Oh, I got a bill thing.
Yes, sir.
Oh. I know the county just done a compensations study. Is there any way to get that study and see, in doing comparison to what the city employees?
I would, I guess they could give it to us, I can ask.
Would you ask the city to do it?
Okay. And then again, it's gonna be based on classifications.
Yeah, that's fine, I just. Oh, also, we were talking about the buildings a while ago and stuff. How do we get Saveway to fix their building up? How do we get the, the old seafood place beside Dollar General to fix their place up? It's just an ice wall coming down right from the border, and water, real water. I mean, is there anything we can do to get them to?
Talk about new build?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought the people that own Dale's Soul was moving. They bought it or, I mean, have you heard anything about that?
They're trying to lease it.
Have y'all tried to?
My understand, I mean, they have bought that and just completed, but there, I think they had some things they had to get taken care of. My understanding was their plan was to move into it eventually. I think they had a lease.
Savmark, who owned Savmark did not want to sell it, because they, for Savway, they did not want competition. So they're, they bought that to keep competition from coming to that area.
Is that Smith Rogers?
Yeah.
I mean, if the building is, is, you know, structurally damaged or something like that, we condemn it. But other than that, if they had broken out windows, or, you know, I ride by there, I don't really notice it that much, but.
Look it up, the things on the vacant buildings?
Just a ice wall.
So vacant buildings are.
Oh, the last thing is, I want to mention this, I hope that you'll be able to put this on your website, about the dorm ready event that Ms. Purnell's having, this coming Saturday, for all the college graduates that's gonna be attending the university on campus. And I'm pretty sure she's already reached out to y'all, and everything, I just wanted to mention, that's a great thing for the college students, to take advantage of this. She's got enough to serve up a full one of college graduates. And I think that's a great thing for the community. So that's all I have, yeah.
All right, good deal. Anything else? Ms. Purnell, would you close the sounding prayer anymore?
Our Father, who art in heaven, dear Lord God, we thank you for your wisdom, your guidance, and your presence among us on tonight, Lord God, during this city council meeting. Dear Lord God, we ask you to please continuously bless our mayor, city council, city manager, city attorney, all the department heads on tonight, that we will continuously make the decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. And we pray in everything we do, we can carefully give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise, for us, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.